Welcome. It's nice to see such an enthusiastic crowd here this evening. I'd like to begin by calling the Lowell School Committee regular meeting to honor, and please join me now in honoring America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and again, welcome. Roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty.
Here.
Ms. Laraba.
Here.
Mr. Leahy.
Here.
Mr. Leary.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Ma'am Melanazo.
Here.
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. First honor of business, under special honor of business, the first item Spotlight on Excellence, the MCAS PowerPoint presentation. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd first like to acknowledge all of our staff who've come over tonight to celebrate the results of our MCAS scores that were recently released yesterday by the state. I'd like to congratulate all those who are here and those who couldn't make it this evening on the good work and efforts. We know that you give 150 percent, and the presentation that we are able to share with our school community tonight is because of your many good efforts. So I'll just walk over to the presentation. Can you guys hear me up there? Okay, Spotlight on Excellence tonight is all of your hard work, our students and their families' commitment to Lowell Public Schools. Improved student achievement across our system, and I would like to take a minute to thank the school committee for your leadership and support for improved student achievement in three key areas. The establishment of our district strategic goal for student achievement, driving school reform through the use of professional learning communities. The school committee committed over $500,000 of stimulus money last year and again this year to build capacity at grade level across our system, bringing teams of educators, teachers, and administrators together to mine their data to determine what lessons need to be differentiated for the students in front of us. And what you're going to see tonight is really the result of this ongoing good work. Establishing six early release professional development days dedicated to this work. It gives teachers time across the system, especially our K-8 teachers who did not have this time built into the teacher's contract. This enables them to come together to, again, look at their data and develop teaching strategies that are going to best meet the needs of their children. And there are countless hours, all of your hours, that you spend, not only in the meeting that's televised every two weeks, but the subcommittee meetings, hours and hours of your personal time, the leadership and expertise and years of experience that you provide to the cabinet level and to the teachers who come and present. We really do appreciate your efforts. What's new this year, the Department of Education has a new designation, and it's called Commendation Schools. And we were informed this afternoon, the Department of Education contacted Lowell Public Schools to make sure, they knew that we had a school committee meeting tonight, and they wanted to make sure that we knew that there were four schools in our district that basically are on the honor roll in the state. There are 187 schools that have been given this designation, and these schools are recognized for raising student achievement while at the same time demonstrating a consistent narrowing of achievement gaps among students. And the four schools in Lowell who have met this criteria, the Lincoln School for High Growth, the Maury for narrowing proficiency gaps, the Shaughnessy for narrowing the proficiency gap, and the Wang for High Growth. Congratulations. This isn't districts, this is schools, so that only 187 were named, and four of those schools are in Lowell. And as you'll see throughout the PowerPoint presentation tonight, there's over 85 percent of our schools have been, in some grade level or in some category, really showing great improvement. Two schools which will exit NCLB accountability status this year in content areas, the Maury School for English Language Arts and the Bailey School will, again, come out of improvement year-two status, and they will have no status. Congratulations to the Maury and the Bailey Schools for that. This is such a good news story. There's 41 slides. So, just to give you a heads up, schools with a 5% or greater increase, and we say 5%, because the 5% is what the state looks for and looks at, and we just want to bring your attention that all of these schools are over 7%. Forget the 5, they're over 7, which is statistically significant in ELA. The Lincoln, McAvenue, 9.7, the Merklin, 10.4, the Maury, 10.8, the Shaughnessy, 12.13, and the Bailey at 13.2. Schools with a 5% or greater increase in mathematics, CPI, the Maury School, 20.7% in one year. Congratulations. The Bailey School, 13.9, the Shaughnessy, 12.5, McAvenue, 12.2, the Wang, 7.8, Patacaville, 7, McCullough School, 6.7, the Washington, 6.4, and the Raleigh, 6.1. Recent gains at the Maury School in ELA, and, in ELA, sorry, 75 CPI points in math. You can see the upward trend of 76.4, and we're just so impressed with the progress that that school has made, and they've met AYP in both categories. Last year at this time, we presented to the school committee for the first time the growth data, and just to remind our school community that the growth data basically falls out in these five categories. 5%, sorry, 20% of our students fall in the very low statewide, low 20%, moderate 20%, 20% high, and 20% of the students fall in the very high category. As I go through this presentation, I bring your attention to what we highlight here tonight is all of our schools at various grade levels who score in the high and very high range, which is very impressive. The statewide, 40% of our students are in the high or very high categories. Here, it shows us the high-growth classes, 50% or more students are in the high or very high-growth categories in district math, grade six and grade eight. For us here, our grade six students across the districts, 30%, that's 50% higher than the state for their growth, and we're above the average here as well. And in the eighth grade, we're 25%, 5% higher than the state, 5% higher at the state in the very high range. Here, particular mention, honorable mention to the Wang School in the very high range, 45% of their children, students fell there, and in the very high end for the Daley, a 29%. Again, almost 50% higher. Mill School for English Language Arts, our growth data, again, our district did very well compared to the state as well overall. But honorable mention to the Daley School, which, again, in the very high range, and the Wang scored 50% higher than the state. At the grade four level, the Lincoln School for English Language Arts, the Lincoln School in the very high range scored 38%. Again, state average, where you're looking for is 20. Here, grade four, at the, grade four math, at the Maury School, 51% in the very high range, 28% in the high. The Moody School, 50%, 26% in the high. The Pine was 34% instead of 20, 22% in the high. The Lincoln was 30% very high and 22 in the high. McAvenue, 26 and 30 in the high. Grade five, English Language Arts, again, our district did overall, almost on target. We were a little low on the very high range with 16%, but honorable mention in this category goes to the Pine, 38% very high, 32% at high. Congratulations. And the Daley, 33% at the very high. For English Language Arts, district compared to the state, we were 2% higher than, in the very high category, 1% higher in the high. The Daley in the very high was 35% and 21% at the high. The Wang was 33% and 22, very high range, and 24 at the very high for the Pine, and 31% high at the Pine. Grade six math, honorable mention across our district, the sixth grade, at the very high end, we were 50% higher than the state, 21% in the high range. Honorable mention to the Pine, which scored 56%. Wow, that's just incredible. Congratulations. The Wang, 50% very high. The Daley was 48% very high. And also honorable mention of the Daley scoring 26 in the high range, and the Stocklosa, 24 in the very high and 26 in the high. English Language Arts, the seventh grade, our district on the very high and high, we're just below the state average, but honorable mention to the Wang School, 35% in the very high range, and the Butler School, 24% in the very high range, and 28, very impressive in the high. Grade seven mathematics, our district on the very high end, another impressive score of 27% on the very high. The Wang School, 57% in the very high range, and the Bartlet was 31% in the very high and 24%, sorry, 25% in the high. I like that, "Together we can sign." That's cool. Yeah, right then. Growth, grade eight ELA, English Language Arts, again, our district on the very high range scored 5% higher, 25%, 21 in the high. Honorable mention to the Wang at 37% in the very high, the Daley, 32%, the Butler, 26%, and the Stocklosa gets honorable mention, very high range of 23, and in the high range of 31. Grade eight math, again, our district in the very high end, 26%, 25%. Honorable mention goes to the Wang at 49% very high. Sullivan, 27, and 30% in the high. Stocklosa in the very high, 27 points, sorry, and Stocklosa, 23% in the high, and the Bartlet, 25% in the very high and 31% in the high. I just want to share with the committee, on the first day when we had leadership, we took this data, and this is just a brief overview of what we shared, the data we shared with our leadership across the system, and they took it back to their staff. And how we're doing our data summits, it's an ongoing process this year, and the first data summit day was our leadership day. And then they shared this information with their staff across the system, things that we were looking at, do report card grades align with MCAS scores? That's a question we're all interested in knowing. Now we have this data, we can clearly understand what that answer is. How many students fall in the low-growth, low-achievement quadrant? How many students fall in the low-growth, high-achievement quadrant? And do you have low-growth students with high report card grades? So you can imagine that that generated some very interesting discussions. And do report card grades align with MCAS? So here, for those of you who can't see, this is the MCAS scaled score, and this is the final report card grade. And obviously, what, this is 280, the top score in an MCAS, and this is 200 a low, and a report card grade of 40 to 100. So what we expect to see as a district is that students who score in this range are going to have higher grades. It's a problem when we see clusters of students who score low on the MCAS but score high grades. So what this tells us is that there's not an alignment between the teacher's expectation and the standards. So teachers don't, perhaps haven't aligned the standard of what is expected at a particular grade level, a particular lesson, and we see grade inflation. Where we have schools who share profiles, where we have schools where we have an upward trend, and we want everybody to be over in this cluster, those are our higher-performing schools. And this is the trend that you want to see. That's one of our better trends, and the Wang School did extremely well. This is our MCAS scaled score, again, on that axis, and our final report card grade. And so this student here, just by example, right here, we have a student who scored around 85 and is above a 260. That's what you want to see. So you really want to see this movement to that quadrant, like that. And we, the other thing that we really find through, out of our K-4 system, is to the extent that these match, we need to make sure that if our teachers, right here, we're saying the Maury School, this is the Maury School in yellow, an area of concern, Maury School MCAS performance is the green, and this is the report card. So these two really need to be matched up. To the extent that they're closely matched in numbers, that we have the expectation the standard is being met and matched up, matches up correctly with the state standards. Where we see discrepancy, we have work to do. Same with that area. And again, this is a student growth percentile and our MCAS scaled score. This is 200 a low, 280 high, and the growth percentile. So what this tells us, this particular scatter plot, is that these students scored perfectly on the MCAS in this quadrant here, and they had a full year's growth. This is what we want to see. So we're worried and having conversations about these children here. So why did these children only move four months or three months? And we would expect to see, because they've only grown that much, we would expect to see low growth, low MCAS scores as well. So that's the conversation that we are having with our staff throughout the system. How many students fall in the low-growth, low-achievement quadrant? How many students fall in the low-growth, high-achievement quadrant? This, again, is the student percentile. This is a seventh-grade teacher. So we generated all of these reports for all of our teachers, so that they can see how their grades, a teacher's grade, and in this case, how the students' growth and their MCAS scores were correlated. And so for some of our teachers across the system, there was a perfect match between getting a high MCAS score and high growth. For other teachers, they, the information tells them that they need to better understand what the academic expectation is at their grade level for their curriculum and the content that they need to cover. Because what we need to see is high growth, so we want people over here at 100% growth, so all of these children need to be over here and in the high range of the MCAS. So that's a data-driven conversation that our teachers are having with their coaches and with the administration and with other teachers on their team. Again, student growth data and final report cards. So teachers now know that this teacher is a seventh-grade teacher in our system, and she knows that she's given very high grades, but her students have not grown, or his students have not grown. So this is a conversation that we're having, okay, we know that there's a problem here of low expectation or misalignment of standards. All these children here have had great growth, that's what we're looking for. And this is the final report card grade, so this teacher has it compared, at least to the last scatter plot, more accurately done. So we'd like to thank everyone for the good work that enabled us to show this tonight, and we just want to show you just quickly, on the first day of school, to introduce this data summit, we did a brief video welcoming everybody back to school, and we thought this would be appropriate, and we just went over, basically, for our teachers, a message from me saying what was going to come up in the next few weeks, and in particular, on opening day. Maybe. Thanks, Paul. Okay, we don't have sound, the program just got shorter. Okay.
Again, thank you all for coming, and congratulations to each and every school. Well done. We'll just give it another minute.
Thanks, Paul.
Moving on with the agenda, let me ask, do any of my colleagues have any questions on the Spotlight on Excellence, the MCAS update? If not, a motion would be in order to accept the report as a report of significant progress by Ms. Laraba, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor of accepting the report signify by saying aye. Opposed, to vote. Thank you. The next item on the agenda, the minutes of the regular school committee meeting of September 1st, 2010. Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. I know that my colleagues and I, we were emailed the minutes today. I tried to get to them, but they're like 25 pages. I wonder if people would be okay with us approving them at our next meeting, because I would like to take the time to read them.
Okay. Motion to, motion to.
Delay.
Delay action on the regular school committee meeting minutes of September 1st by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Conway. Any further discussion? All those in favor of delay signify by saying aye. Opposed, to vote. And again, I just want to state that it was a Comcast issue and not a secretary issue. Continuing with the agenda, permission to enter, Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Your Honor. University of Massachusetts at Lowell, Sungus Industrial History Center, for $33,450 to provide courses to enrich student content understanding and skill development on the American Industrial Revolution in the third, fourth, eighth, and 11th grades. Funding provided by the school department, local budget, field trip admissions fees. Lab collaborative for the amount of $116,500 to provide for the out-of-district tuition costs for one student enrolled and receiving services, as outlined in the Special Education IEP. Funding provided by the school department Special Education Tuition Account. New England Academy, $53,584 to provide for out-of-district tuition costs for one student enrolled and receiving services, as outlined in the Special Education IEP. Funding provided by the school department Special Education Tuition Account. The American School at Heartland for the Death, for $17,784 to provide round-trip transportation for two Special Education students from the American School at Hartford for the Death, Westford, Connecticut, to Lowell. Funding provided by the Special Education Transportation Budget.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Any questions on the four items under? Permission to enter, Ms. Laraba.
Through you to the superintendent, on our last item, is this a one trip and they're staying there for a little bit, or this is every day?
Through me, if you don't mind, to Assistant Superintendent Murphy, to clarify the frequency of this transportation.
This is reimbursement, this is reimbursement for a parent who is transporting her child on the weekends and school vacations.
Any other questions? Motion to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leahy. Roll call.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Ms. Laraba.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Ma'am Melanazo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Seven yes, approved.
We have two memorials this evening, and I would ask for a moment of silence in darkened chambers for Officer Patrick P.J. Johnson, son of Rick Johnson, our city clerk, and Christian Luminallo, son of police officer Christopher Luminallo. Please let us rise now in a moment of silence in darkened chambers. Any unfinished business?
Mayor, if it's okay if I take something out of order, out of the agenda?
Motion to suspend the rules. By Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Leahy, to take.
New business, item number seven, permission to post media technology support liaison.
Permission to post media technology support liaison. First of all, we need to get approval to take it out of order. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, to vote. Mr. Chair, recognize Mr. Leary.
I guess we're really looking for information, report from the superintendent and from the Assistant Superintendent of Finance.
Sorry, I'm just pulling the report.
And I apologize, it's the hybrid position, and I know it was buried in on a lot of paperwork. I just, there are a few people here tonight that'd like to.
Sure.
Get it addressed.
So as per the request of the committee, we went back and worked with the LSAA union to come up with a hybrid position to support our technology needs throughout the system, not only our hardware and programming, but also the position was designed to address our curriculum leadership needs in our libraries across the system. our curriculum leadership needs in our libraries across the system. The proposal basically looks at three positions, and we have taken all of the monies from the three tech positions that were in the first plan, and as well as the administrative position, and combined all of those monies, which would be the amount of money that would be required to fund those three positions. We did extend the work year as well with the support of the LSAA. So it is a new position. Are there any questions?
Any questions of Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. I appreciate all the work that went into this. Just a couple of concerns I had were, was the, I guess, the percentage of time that would be when we mix the two job positions together.
Right.
So I was, I just have a few concerns that this might not be, I know it's going to be a mixture of the two positions, but how much library-media specialist is it going to be? How much of that position? And just from asking around, I'm not sure if I'm happy with the percent of that job description in with this hybrid. I know a few people have come to speak tonight maybe on it, and we all had some concerns, but maybe the best thing might be that after we're all done discussing it, just to send this to subcommittee one more time, so we can kind of get a handle on what everybody's perspective is and, and I guess what the need is that we're trying to fill at the school and schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conway?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After taking a look at the, the job description, I thought, and I understand, I understand what my colleagues talked about, the last school committee meeting is coming up with a hybrid, which perhaps makes sense. However, I think that I would have liked to have seen more on the side of the, on the library side instead of the technology side. That's what I was looking for, because I think what we're talking about is, you know, hands-on, direct services to the students, and that's what I was looking for, to be quite frank with you. And I, again, I appreciate the hard work, and I know what it is to do reports, and it can be very time-consuming, and I try not to be critical on those, but in this particular case, I just feel that it should be more heavily weighted on the, on the library specialty instead of the media. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leary?
Just a couple of questions. One, thank you very much for taking the time, because it wasn't easy to put together in like a week's, you know, basically a week and a half time. That's, let's be realistic. The effort is very good, and I think it's a good start. I guess the first question, I mean, some members had concerns regarding, and legitimate concerns, why was this more tainted towards technology as opposed to library? And I guess that that's kind of the first question of what the thought process was in terms of coming up with the job description that we had. I don't know if we've given an answer to that at this point, or?
Madam Superintendent?
Really, we did try to be sensitive to the issues around the hybrid position, but I need to be very clear, we have so many technology needs across the system. This position is not that it doesn't address, it addresses both job descriptions, but we do need to make sure that whatever position we fill, that we have somebody in that position that can do both. And these are very specific skill sets. If we look at four, knowledge and experience in troubleshooting installation, MAC-WIN operation systems, service and printers, knowledge of backup procedures and storage hardware, knowledge of CD-ROM towers. Five, knowledge of educational technologies, including computers, networking, multimedia, and telecommunications. Those are very specific skill sets that we have a great need for in the system, so we really do need to post it, and so that the person can help us deliver, because we just don't have a really big, we do not have much of any technology department. And we just have so many reporting systems that are online. Our assessment, as Assistant Superintendent, sorry, Deputy Superintendent Franco mentioned at a previous meeting, our assessments are online. We do the grade at the middle school now, and just across our system, we have computers that go down, programs, the committee has invested literally hundreds of thousands of dollars in technology that we will not be able to use unless we have somebody who has very specific skill sets. And under preferences for the position, I bring your attention to, you know, four, five, and six. Again, really specific skill sets. And three, I, I mean, those, if we hire somebody who's, to Mr. Conway's point, we would like to be able to hire somebody who is going to spend time in the classroom instructing, but we need this person also to have these skill sets, just to keep our systems up and running.
Ms. Laraba, then Mr. Leahy.
Thank you. I kind of feel like we're going around in circles again. You know, with all due respect to my fellow committee members, they've talked about this hybrid position, yet they haven't really fleshed out anything specific of what they're looking for. We've got a lot of theory about it, it'd be nice to have people in the classroom, and it'd be nice to have them working with them. The superintendent has said repeatedly that she needs support with the computers, you know, and we held off getting the three positions of the technicians, and we're now back with, you know, fluffing this position to try to work with it and get the hybrid part in there, but the bottom line is, they need people working on the computers. We've two weeks into school. If something happens to any of those systems, they're dead in the water. They can't do their assessments, they can't do their curriculum. I would not be agreeable to postponing, again, I mean, we've already talked about this several, several weeks, and I'm not sure how much they can change it to please you when the bottom line is, we don't have enough money to adequately support every single school with somebody in the, hands-on, and this is trying to make the best do with what we have available to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. I understand what you, what my colleague's saying, but when we put this motion on myself and Mr. Leary, my expectations were that this is going to be a hands-on with students position. It's come clear to me over the last couple of weeks that we need, I guess we need a computer experts in the district. So I think that's a whole separate issue. If we need three people like on the suggestion from last week, if we need them, then we need to find a way to pay for them and work on computers. But what I'm trying to do is get library-media people back in the schools. I thought it was an important, you know, it's important to have that hands-on training. So that's what I'm looking for, and I don't mean to be confusing with this, but, but that's what I'm looking for. So if we actually have two separate needs, then no, we can't fulfill it with this position. And that, so I would say that we need to separate it, and if we need to make a vote tonight to hire three or two computer people to work on computers and get things up, then we need to do that. But the hybrid position was just an idea of combining the IT position with the library-media position into one position that would be hands-on, direct services to students. Thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to first say that I share my colleagues' frustration. This hybrid job description is not a solution. It's a Band-Aid. The best scenario, I think what everybody sitting here would like to see, is every school having a librarian, every school having computer teachers, and having technology staff in all our schools to do, to meet our technology needs. Because as the superintendent said, this is the world we're living in. We have already invested a huge amount in technology. So I recognize that this option has some serious shortfalls to it. But that said, I think it's far better than what we were faced with two weeks ago, and I want to again commend the administration, as people earlier have said, for their work, and also for the unions, for stepping up to the plate and recognizing we have this need, and we only have limited resources. So I think this is the best we can hope for right now. And when my colleagues talk about direct services, again, I point to the numbers that the superintendent mentioned on their responsibilities, that we're looking for people to assist our staff in enhancing our blogs and our websites. We've said repeatedly how much we need that in our schools. Coordinate the use of the technology, working with our teachers to make sure the delivery of the software happens for students. Those are directly impacting student learning, and I would go so far to say that if the systems are down, we've got computer labs that aren't working, we've got computer research that's not happening in our, in our classrooms because we don't have the technology to make it happen. We're already behind the eight ball because we haven't been able to keep up on technology, you know, keep buying the hardware and all that, but I really think that right now, this is what we should do. This is better than the option we faced two weeks ago. I'm really glad that we had that delay, and I recognize it's not the perfect solution by any means. And frankly, I'd like to go for four instead of three. I think we're very close on the money. Then we could say two would be dedicated to the elementary, two would be dedicated to the middle, but if there's not support around going the four, I would be quite comfortable voting for the three tonight. To move forward, we've heard loud and clear from the administration, the priorities around technology, this seems to me a good start to try to put a Band-Aid on the situation we're facing. Thank you.
Mr. Leary?
Thank you. I guess Ms. Doherty put it probably the best way of saying it. I think we all want the library-media specialist position back. The reality is, we do not have the money to do that. You know, you look at this job description, I think when Mr. Leahy and I designed our hybrid motion, we were literally thinking we'd get seven, eight folks doing technology and being in a library doing a lot of those services. It's, you know, we have enough for three, you might be able to squeeze four positions that have significant value. I think it's much improved over the last meeting that we had. I don't think it was fluffed. I think it was, it's a, it's a high, you know, value position that we need. Again, is it as good as having a library-media specialist? No. You know, if you look at the number of millions of dollars we've cut over the past three years, including Title I, it's over $15 million in three years. It's not funny. There's areas that hurt, and technology is an area where we need to support our teachers in the classroom. The library-media specialists in our schools were definitely a part of all what you saw here tonight. They played a very intricate role, a very valuable role, that we are missing right now. We are all cognizant of that. If it wasn't going to be the library-media specialist, it would have been another valuable position. We all made that decision. Some of us voted for it, some of us didn't. It is what it is. It's not easy to go to people that you care about and say, "That position is not in the budget right now." But that is what it is. I am going to support this position. If we can make four positions out of it, I think it has higher value. I think it's imperative that we get it moving right now. The way the budget's going to be next year, a lot of our positions are going to need to have evolved on the fly. And that's not happened before in any type of public school system that I can think of, or any type of, you know, municipal government, but that's what we're really going to have to be looking at next year. Positions will evolve. I'd like to see this evolve with the race to the top money, if possible, to make it what Mr. Leahy and I had initially envisioned. More librarian as well as technical positions, and add more positions. That may happen in December or January when we get the race to the top money. But right now, this is a good start for a horrific situation we were faced with last year. Again, it's not the best, but if we could come out with a fourth individual for this position, it would have high value, that would significantly improve and assist the teachers in the classroom. When the race to the top money gets in, if we can add additional positions like this, or even library-media specialists back in at that point in time, or a hybrid that Mr. Leahy and I had envisioned initially, very cool. I think that's something we need to jump on, and some of these positions here may actually evolve into that. We have to stop thinking that it's solidified. We have to move on the fly. Again, I apologize for hurting anybody. I didn't, that wasn't my intent. My intent was to add high value to the system as much as possible, given the financial constraints. Thank you.
Mr. Conway, then Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, just very briefly here, it's very obvious that, that this is, this is an important issue to everyone, and I think it shows the importance of both these areas to our school system. And, you know, again, going back to monies being very tight, and, you know, we have come up with a figure of $361,798. What I'm wondering is, is it possible, you know, when I'm listening to Mr. Leahy, and I think he's hit it right on the head, where, you know, we're talking about two separate, we're talking about two separate issues here. We're talking about a, a technology specialist, and we're talking about a library specialist. They're basically two, two different areas, and I understand the hybrid situation, I understand that. However, I'm wondering, you know, do we, do we spend a few dollars out of that $4.8 million to get it right, so that we can have both? I, I think it might be something to take a look at. I don't know if the, if the committee would, would entertain that, but again, I think that, I personally don't, I, I wouldn't necessarily go along with the way it is right now, and again, I appreciate everyone with their time and effort and energy that's put into it, but I just would rather have more of the emphasis put on the, on the library side, should we say, rather than the technology side. Again, I couldn't support it the way it is written here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Ms. Martin, then Ms. Laraba.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. In having reviewed the, the position and seen the way that the, the tasks kind of fall into place, I think that this is remarkably in line with what was requested of the administration, and I think they've crafted a position that really has very specifically answered the problem we put to them. We asked for a hybrid position, excuse me, that combined both these skill sets, and I, you know, and I see both those skill sets clearly represented in here. I share everyone's frustration and concern. I wish we could bring back three of each. I mean, more, let's be honest. But I think to have the opportunity now to bring back this, these, to bring back three positions that will support that, that library component, that, that literacy and that work in the classroom component, and, and also have the technology component, which we have to recognize is, is critical. I mean, there's just nothing, there's nothing that's happening in our schools that doesn't have some reliance on technology. I think that, I know we can talk about wanting to go up to four, or, again, you know, the, the numbers could keep increasing. What I find, the reason that I feel, excuse me, that I can support this is because it does fall within that very specific $361,000. It's not a lot of wiggle room. This is not some kind of, it's not even truthfully guaranteed. I mean, we're really relying on what the increased funding will be based on the charter school population shift. So, I mean, we're already on shifting sands to begin with. We're taking a risk because it is that important to, I believe, us as a committee, certainly to our district, and I'm willing to take that risk at that level. Moving forward, I, I wouldn't be comfortable adding any other additional positions. I also wouldn't be comfortable pairing this or splitting this into kind of one half or the other of, of the proposed hybrid that we requested. I do have, just in terms of some questions, the direct supervision of these positions, you know, it's, it's a challenge, and it will be a challenge for these three individuals to do their work across the district. Who will be the direct supervisor of these three positions? I'm sure it's on here, but I just didn't.
Madam Superintendent?
The Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operation, or designee?
I do think that that does, I would like to see some representation from the curriculum side in that supervisory process, if only because of the structure of these two departments. I mean, Business and Finance does not have, I wouldn't think, the, the staff, where we do have district support specialists, whether literacy, you know, I would think literacy, who might be able to take on that role to make sure that that was being accomplished, that, that component of it that we see is so important, that literacy part of it. So I would make that as a recommendation. I mean, that's obviously for the I mean, that's obviously for the, you know, we can make that determination moving forward. And I have to, you know, echo my colleague's sentiments in terms of thanking the union. It is, it is a breath of fresh air to be able to have found a solution in working in concert with our unions, and I am very appreciative of that. And I think that this does show that when we have the opportunity to be nimble and to make, to make decisions that are in the best interests of our district, and most specifically our students, that the ability to work with our unions really is the key to that success. There's nothing that we do as individuals, or as an entity, that has any impact if it doesn't include the people who are doing the actual, the actual work, day in and day out. So I will support this as proposed. Any, I would not be able to support any effort to split the position. And I wouldn't be able to, at this point, be able to support any kind of increase in the numbers. And again, I think that this is an opportunity that I did not think we would have. So the idea that we're going to be able to bring back three, I think, could become quite critically important positions that could have a real impact in our district. I am, I am looking forward to voting.
Thank you. Ms. Lariba?
Thank you. I'm actually going to steal Ms. Martin's phrase about the shifting sands of the finances here. I agree with her completely, that, you know, this is not set in stone money. We're relying on the Lowell Community Charter money to come in at the two sixty-three, two ninety-seven. Because of that, I also could not support adding a fourth position to this, as stated. I'm also a little concerned at the bottom of this, when we get down here. You know, we listed the salary at the master's degree level with zero to ten years of experience, and the actual individual hired would be compensated at the appropriate education and experience level. I don't mean to sound like I'm trying to cheap it out, but I would hope that we would try to get somebody at the first step, so that we could stay close to those numbers, because I would hate to have proved three positions and find out that they're making seventy or eighty based on, and rightfully so, if they have the experience and stuff. But that's a concern of mine. The other concern of mine is, we get down here to the bottom, and if there's a shortfall, it would be applied against the four-point-eight million, which we, as a group, have already said, we want to hold for next year. So I'm actually very uncomfortable with having that set as stone, that that's how we're going to handle any kind of shortfall. And I don't know if, what the best way it is to try to address that, but those are my other concerns. And the last question I had is, you know, we've put this third paraprofessional position in here, and I don't mean to sound misinformed, but is that something that we absolutely need right now, or is that a third position, something we can add in later? Because if I remember correctly, we just have people starting to come into this program. We're not at full capacity yet. So I'm not sure if that's a question that the superintendent could answer for me.
Well, I would like the, I would like Deputy Superintendent Jean Franco to speak to it, but we do have a great deal of need now, and we're receiving more children the end of October, so.
We already have twenty-two plus in the kindergarten, first grade program at the newcomers, at the Moody's School. And we actually have approaching twenty in the second through fourth grade, at the Pine Arts School, fifth through, five through eight. We are a little lower, so we would put the extra paraprofessional at the Moody's School with the young children, because with the young kids, they're really most needed. But it is filling up, actually faster than we anticipated, and we know that there will be an influx of new immigrants, refugee students, at the end of October. And we are told, and I know this sounds so insufficient as far as exact data, between sixty and ninety, we are told from the local agency, sixty and ninety students. So I don't know grade level, but October, November, we will have influx. It could be within that range. So even if it's on the low end, I anticipate that I will not only be asking you all for paraprofessionals, but we will need additional support in teaching, and I'm a little worried about that. But that's the reality, what we hear from the experts. Ms. Lariba?
Okay, so this is something that you do need sooner rather than later.
Mr. Leahy, then Mr. Leary. I just would caution my colleagues, we're getting into the third round of discussion here, so, Mr. Leahy.
Okay. Thank you. One more question, whoever can answer this. How much different would this job description be from the computer technician's position that was off in a couple of weeks ago? Because the responsibilities kind of look like that.
Right, Madam Superintendent?
Again, the job description that was presented to you a few weeks ago was the original job description of that position. And at that time, we told you we were going to tweak it to address the needs, once we get the feeling of what sentiment of the committee. So there are similarities between this job description and that job description. But again, we did consider the issue of hybrid, and we really did want to bring something forward tonight that addressed your concerns, Mr. Leahy. You know, I do understand that you, as we all do, want to have librarians back in our libraries, but we just really, this proposal, the amount of money that we're talking about, doesn't get us there, to be able to offer that direct service.
Okay, but this really doesn't have direct, this is more like assisting the teachers in the classroom, the way it reads.
Well, I think the points made, and one that I'd like to emphasize, is that this position really enables our teachers to work with our students with technology and with programs that we have purchased throughout the system. So to say that it's not providing direct instruction, in one way, that's the case, but it's providing teachers in classrooms with support so they can use the technology, so that they can use the programs, and that is direct service. Because what will happen if we are not able to use the programs to access the technology with the teachers, again, it's so that we can fully use the capacity of all our programs with the teachers we have in front of us. But they need help. They need support. And this will, these positions, we feel, will do that.
All right, and I understand that, but I guess my, what, my thinking leads me to believe that last week's, the position before was like ten thousand dollars cheaper, and I don't believe it had pay scales and all that, right? So, I mean, all of a sudden, now, we've got the same job, it looks like the same job description as the computer technician, yet now we're spending, we've got one, two, three, four, five, we've got seven steps, and, I mean, the pay just goes up ten thousand, up to thirteen, thirteen, fifteen thousand dollars higher than the last position. So that's what I'd like an explanation of. The other one seemed like we were just going to pay fifty thousand, and that's it, unless that had pay scales too, for degrees and all that.
Madam Superintendent?
This job description is more robust than the job descriptions before for the techie positions in the last round. And you, we did have to work with the LSAA to come up with a job description that was within, we have jobs, technology jobs, media specialist jobs, library specialist jobs, in our present contract. So we do have to be sensitive to all those job descriptions. And we looked at them all, and we matched and took the best of those job descriptions that would meet the, what we thought the concerns of the committee were, and met with the LSAA, and said, "Okay, this is the job description. We're going to take this piece, this piece, and this piece." And we looked at the salary schedule that falls within what, within the contract, and what's being proposed here is really, we think, an example of, as Ms. Martin said, collaboration with the union to come up with a position that also gives us an extended year of two-hundred days, which the technology positions in the contract presently don't have, and these do. So we think it's good value for a longer year. And I know that it's not necessarily, Ms. Leahy, the answer you want, but...
It's close.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Before I recognize Mr. Conway, I believe Mr. Leary had his hand up first.
Just a quick question about funding for three versus four. In my understanding, Race to the Top monies, I don't know when they're coming in, I guess it's kind of ambiguous, but my understanding, some of that would be applicable to these types of positions. So if these, if we, if we don't have the funding necessarily for four tonight, we could envision, you know, whenever the monies come, four, five, six, seven, to these positions, and have them even evolve further. I think the one statement I made is, we're going to have to be on the fly with a lot of these positions. This isn't standing in stone anymore. So if we, Race to the Top monies, I guess, would perhaps be applicable to adding more of these positions, as well as maybe some of the evolving positions. Yes, no, or?
Madam Superintendent?
We meet for the first time with the Deputy Commissioner on the funding issue around Race to the Top on Friday. So the four-point-six million, when that was announced, ten days ago, or whenever it was, that's the first time that we even knew by signing, sorry, three, that's a different number, thanks, that, that's the first time we realized, when we signed up for all of those projects, that we were even eligible for that amount of money. So with the report that I'll present later this evening, what needs to be clarified by the state, and we met with some state officials yesterday on the Race to the Top application process for STEM, you know, supporting our, which this would do, support technology at our high school level. And at that meeting with the Department of Elementary Education, they really did tell us that the Race to the Top money is going to be used across the Commonwealth as seed money. So basically, for planning. So the, the one area, for example, that we explored with them yesterday was, okay, if Lowell Public Schools wanted to apply, some of its Race to the Top money to STEM initiatives, technology, science, engineering, math, how much money would be available for us to do that at our high school level? The answer, which, this is all going to be distributed on September the twentieth, is that they will only pay up to fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollars of planning seed money. Then, my understanding is, of the Race to the Top money that's been allocated to Lowell, we will be able to take a certain percentage of that money towards that project. Nobody knows yet how much of that. And we will be left with, after that, having to operationalize it out of our general operating budget. So that raises a big concern for us, which we will discuss with the department on Friday, because if in fact, and again, I'll go into more details when I go through the full report, if in fact it's being set up so that, and I understand that this is the intent of the federal government, to have, you know, good practices take hold in various districts. But the concern that I raised is that if we're going to have seed money, planning money for these initiatives, and are not going to have support to operationalize the plan, we are facing millions of dollars of cuts, and, you know, not to be flip, but to support technology at the high school, I'd have to cut grade-two teachers to do it, because there's not going to be any money left. So these are the discussions that we're having right now with the state. What does it mean? Because if I have to come to the committee to say, "Okay, for us to tap," and again, I'll know more after the twentieth, but specifically, hopefully on Friday, if I have to, in order to tap that three million and some dollars of Race to the Top money, if I have to come to you and say, "Okay, I need to match it with seven million," that's going to be a problem. So I really need to, someone needs to answer some questions around the funding formula, and how it's going to be worked, how it will work. So the representatives from the department yesterday did not have those answers. So I can't sit here tonight and say, I did, that was my first conversation around technology, to try to get that moving. They did say, the information they brought to Lowell yesterday, for us to have this conversation, was hot off the press. You know, we were the first district that had asked for the meeting, that we were meeting with them, to move on with the, our science, technology, engineering, and math Race to the Top application, and we wanted to move the process along. But the conversation came to a pretty quick halt, when they couldn't answer the funding issues, so. And I also raise the concern that, hopefully, it's not as I just described it, although that was the impression everybody was left with, because ultimately, what that would mean is that districts who find themselves in better financial positions throughout the Commonwealth, which most of those aren't urban, will be able to benefit from the science, technology, engineering, and math Race to the Top monies, because they will be able to match in areas without laying off second-grade teachers, et cetera.
Thank you. Mr. Conway, then Ms. Martin, and we should wrap this up.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of clarification. I believe, since we took this out of order, which is fine, I do believe that somebody might want to speak on this particular topic, coming out of public participation. So would we put public participation before the vote?
No.
So in other words, somebody cannot speak on this during the public participation, because the vote would have, had, or would have already been taken?
Well, the recording secretary is saying that they're not registered, and I know that we had talked earlier about having someone speak on the issue under public participation, correct?
Correct.
But, but wasn't, but, no, no one has signed up. No one has signed up. Yes. Well, we actually are under suspension, so, again, if it's this issue, I wasn't sure that this was the issue that you had talked to me about earlier. So if it's this issue, we're still under suspension, so then, yes, they could come forward.
Right, that's what I just said, dealing with this particular issue that we're discussing with. But I'm just saying that someone would want to speak on that, but as you said earlier, that they could speak during the public participation. But if we take the vote now, it's kind of moot question at that point, to have them speak on it.
Again, I defer to my colleagues. If someone is here and they wish to speak on this issue, they should come to the podium.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Conway, second by Mr. Leary, to allow someone from our audience, hi, to speak. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Vote, it's a vote. Welcome.
I'm sorry, I didn't know I had to sign up. I was the head of the union for a long time, so, go. Anyway, I'm talking about Lowell High School in particular, in terms of library, and I'm listening to all this library stuff. And even though I'm old, and I did thirty-five years in two thousand and four, I did use computers, and I used the computer room. I'm not just a book person, but at any level, engineering, whatever, books are still part of the game. And if it's going to be just all computers, which I'm not sure what I'm hearing, and that's okay, but my point is, real quickly, is that with thirty-five hundred-plus students at Lowell High School, and I'll just stick to the high school, one librarian, this is just my opinion, now she could disagree, but my opinion is, one librarian doesn't cut the mustard. And I gave a lot of reports, and I would get, I'll just say, from the computer Harvard student reports, that they paid like ten dollars for over the internet. And I would call them after school and say, "Wow, this is a great report. I don't think I could write it. Now, could you just do a three or four paragraph summary?" And I would take the summary, and I would take the report, and I'd say, "Whoa, this just doesn't mesh." So that more time needs to be taken with the kids. Books, resource books, research books are still, according to the Boston Globe, still a part of, you know, education, and that's all I have to say. One person, in my opinion, and that's all it is, just, it's not enough. When I was there, it was a librarian, an assistant librarian, and a volunteer, patopia, and then teachers, and kids. Amen. But let me just say, I taught Lowell history in all these pictures. Wow, the history of Lowell is right here.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to make one, one small and hopefully brief point. For me, the critical difference between last week's, last meeting's position, which was, in my mind, truly a technician position. It was strictly about, you know, fixing software, plugging in printers, you know, troubleshooting problems with, with software. In my mind, this, this really is significantly different, when you take into account that we are looking for specifically somebody with the Massachusetts State licensure around library media and instructional technology. I mean, that is a key difference, no matter, you know, our instructional technology specialists... our instructional technology specialists still have a teaching licensure, and that is what defines their job. So no matter what it is they're doing around technology, they still are coming from an educator's perspective. And I think that's the real critical difference of bringing, of, of the difference between what we looked at before and what we're looking at now. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lariba?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Superintendent's recommendations for three media technology support liaison positions at $184,398, three fringe benefits at $32,250, one paraprofessional position at $17,873, with fringe benefits of $11,750, for total expenditure of $249,271.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Doherty. Looks like we have someone else who'd like to speak.
Sorry. Yeah, my name's Lisa Kremmon. I was a library media specialist at the Merklin and Lincoln schools. And I just wanted to start out by saying, great job by the Lowell Sun, saying in today's paper that five out of the elementary school, five elementary schools that were mentioned, the Merklin, Lincoln, Shaughnessy, Bailey, and Maury, of those five schools, four of those elementary schools had library media specialists. So I thought we should give ourselves a pat on the back. Anyway, so we're not there anymore. But I'm sure we did have an impact on the children, whether some people think so or not. And Ms. Lariba, you said something about, you'd like to go on the Lowell part of the scale?
I'm not going to let you get into a debate with a school.
I'm not. But I just want to let somebody know that we all have master's degrees, library people need master's degrees. So we'll be on the higher end of the scale if we get hired for those positions. Two weeks ago, I was at a finance committee meeting, and there were three jobs proposed for $50,000, computer techs. There was one job that they were thinking about for $92,000. The job that's being proposed now, the Media Technology Support Liaison, is about $62,000, $63,000, which is kind of in line with the $92,000 position from 12 years ago. If I apply and got this position, I'd be taking a $10,000 cut in pay, and I'd be working four extra weeks a year. Doesn't really, you know, I won't be in a classroom. And I do like the discussion that went on this evening that talked about, I know in the description, it said we would work with educators, and the educators will work with the students. I would rather see myself working directly with students, but, I mean, I guess that would be okay, because I would somehow try to get myself in there with the kids as well, with the teachers. There was one more thing I wanted to make a point on. If you didn't get rid of the library people, and especially the computer people, you wouldn't have the problem, I don't think, of having all these broken down computers and people calling, you know, downtown, or, excuse me, to central office, saying that you need people in there to fix them, because the computer teachers did do that job. They were able to actually work on the computers. And it is a problem now, because there's nobody there that knows how to fix them. And the computer teachers that do have new positions, I'm going to fix the computers, because they're not happy with, you know, what happened to their positions or with our positions. Anyway, thank you for your consideration. I appreciate, Mr. Lang, how hard you did work on this job description. I know you did. And Mr. Leary and Mr. Leahy, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Sure.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Mr. Melonazo. Just very quickly, I guess we're all feeling like we're taking this as a personal attack on what we do as library media specialists. And as I look at this media support liaison position, I do not see anything at all that remotely talks about what a library media specialist would do in the school system. It is completely a computer technician job. $50,000, as you had mentioned, is what the job was last week. All of a sudden, now you've made the same position and bumped it up. Some of the things at a library, that if you wanted to put in here that a librarian may do, would be to collaborate with the teachers, I'm sorry, I'm nervous, to develop and implement lesson plans incorporating the library resources. None of that will get done. This, the current schools right now, with a library media specialist in it, there's thousands of dollars of resources that we, we as a library media specialist, are able to get through our district free. They will no longer, in the middle schools or the elementary schools, be able to get any of those databases that we are talking about, computer technology. They will no longer be free to the city. Some of the other things that we do is, we work in the classrooms with the teachers, we collaborate with the teachers to create lesson plans, we get books. No one will be buying books. The computer technician will not know what resources to buy that support the curriculum that's going on in the schools. No offense to the computer technicians, but they don't know that. They have no expertise in that area. That's what we do as library specialists. We are in the libraries evaluating the resources and assisting in the computer labs. And it sounds like the library media specialists, we're no longer valued in the, this is the Lowell school system. I understand that, that you have to have a priority. And I appreciate all that you do. I know it's hard. I know that you're all home. I haven't slept since June 1st, I think. And I'm sorry, but I just think that we're not important any longer. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Mr. Conway?
Mr. Mayor, is there a way that these two can be separated? Can we separate these two here?
What do we separate? We have a motion, we have a motion on the floor.
Okay. Could I, could I have a substitute motion to separate those two? The jobs, the paraprofessionals in one motion, and then the media technology specialist support?
We actually, we actually already proved the paraprofession. We're, we're actually looking to post the Media Technology Support Liaison, correct?
No.
Well, again, on the agenda, it says permission to post Media Technology Support Liaison. That's what it says on the agenda. And that's what these job descriptions say.
And I think, just to help out a little bit, I think what you're saying is, would your motion actually include them both? I think we need to do them separate anyway. So you're right. If we could just have, you could amend your motion just for that one position, we could vote on it, up or down.
If I could amend my motion to include three Media Technology Support Liaison positions, do I need to do the pricing again?
Motion to amend by the maker of the motion. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Doherty.
So you want to amend, I'm mixed up here, I'm sorry. So we want, we want the? Yeah. Right now, you want to vote on the?
We're going to first vote on the three media technol-
Okay, okay.
-technology support liaison positions.
Separate them, okay.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Lariba?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
No.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Melonazo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
No.
Five yays, two nays, passes. Motion as amended, passes.
Ms. Lariba?
Motion to accept the Superintendent's recommendation for one paraprofessional position and fringe benefits.
Second, second by Mr. Doherty. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Lariba?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Melonazo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yays, approved.
Thank you. Moving back to the regular agenda. With public participation, any other public participation? Motions. First motion by Mr. Doherty, request the Superintendent to provide the committee by October 15th with an actual line item revenue and expenditures report for the Athletics Department over the last two years, FY 2009, FY 2010. Second by Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just very briefly, the three motions tonight all have to do with athletics. It is my hope that we can find some cost efficiencies and ways to save money in athletics, so that none of us here are facing the horrible task of cutting yet more programs from our students. So the first motion has, speaks specifically about the history of spending. It should be easily available. We're just basically looking for, you know, how the money has been spent over the last two years. And I don't see how we could make any future decisions without taking a look at the recent past. That's my intention with that.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye. Post the vote. Next motion by Mr. Doherty, request the Superintendent to provide the committee with information regarding Athletic Department revenue and expenses for FY 2010, 2011, in order to make informed decisions for the FY 2012 budget. The information should be reported within three weeks after each season ends and include the following. A, the actual revenue and expenses associated with each sport team, including but not limited to coaches' salaries, equipment, contracted athletic services, and transportation. This information should contain both local and athletic revolving fund revenue and expenses, as well as include the number of students involved in each sport at the beginning and at the end of the season. And B, a current inventory of uniforms and equipment by sport team, including the number, age, and replacement plans for uniforms and equipment. The information should include the type of uniforms applied to each player and each sport team, the process for determining purchase, maintenance, and reuse of uniforms and equipment, as well as whether the uniform and equipment is provided by Lowell High School or the individual student athlete. Also include information where appropriate regarding contracts for buying athletic uniforms and equipment in bulk. Second by Ms. Martin. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, this is driven by our need for information. I did have lengthy conversations with Deputy Superintendent, I'm sorry, Assistant Superintendent Lang, about what are some of the specific things we should be looking for. And that's why this motion specifically speaks to the current and moving forward. We're not expecting to get this detailed information from the last two years, because they may have not been keeping track. Maybe they bought, you know, 500 soccer balls, and it went to girls soccer and boys soccer. I mean, obviously, but now we want to be more drilled out, so we, again, can get good information, so we're making decisions based on the best information. And that's my intention here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conway, then Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think that this motion here is, is obviously a very involved motion. It's going to take quite a bit of information to bring forward. What I would like to suggest, if it's all right with the, the author of the motion, that we take this and put it into the Subcommittee on Athletics, and that we can bring forward the headmaster and the athletic director, and we can discuss this in more detail at a subcommittee meeting, if the author of the motion would agree with that.
Ms. Doherty?
I think it's a fine idea to have an athletic subcommittee and talk about the information we're looking going forward. My concern would be, I think we need to make the vote tonight, because we need to start collecting the information now for the sport we're currently in. I think, I agree, we're looking for a level of detail here. We have to look for a level of detail here. I remind my colleagues, we were, how much were in the hole with food service? $750,000, before we started to drill down and look at the level of detail. What are we spending our money on? And how might we do it more efficiently, so that we can use the, those limited resources for the students? So I believe I had a motion in August that impacts the Athletic Subcommittee. I'm on the Subcommittee. I think we should schedule a meeting right away to look at some of this stuff. But in terms of saying, oh, we're going to wait till we meet again in October, to say that we want to start keeping very clear track of our expenditures, I'm not comfortable with that. I don't know if that clearly-
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. Not, because this motion is specific to looking at the information we'll need for the FY 2012 budget, I would like to make a request. I know that there have been some issues with email at Central Office, so I don't know if my email made it through. Okay. I had sent an email, I want to say it was probably Monday, regarding a $200,000 grant opportunity from the NFL for high schools, urban high school sports, football programs specifically designed to address safety concerns. So I, I'll send it again. I had sent it through your office to be referred to my colleagues, and also to, obviously, the headmaster and the athletic director. And I only mention it here because it does, it would be something that would come in in terms of the FY 2012 budget, and just want to make sure that everyone was available, was aware of it. And it does have an October, I believe, 16th in that area deadline. But I'll forward that again. It just occurred to me as we were sitting here that the email problem might have-
Thank you. Mr. Larry, did you have a hand up?
Well, that sounds like really good news, actually. So that's cool. Thank you, NFL. I guess the, you know, I don't have a problem. Obviously, we should have this information anyway. But the point, I think, is we need to have a real good discussion about the athletics in terms of where we're going to be going next year. You know, we have an athletic director who is responsible for, you know, a significant number of sports, as well as chairman of the Physical Education and Health Department at the high school. I think having a meeting is a more advantageous proposal at this point in time. I don't think we should be escaping any information. But I think a good dialogue might prevent us, might help us, I guess, really, from, prevent us from wasting our time spinning our wheels, but might actually drill down to exactly what we need and what we, where we want to go. Again, I don't want to stop anybody from getting information, this information, you know, inventory of uniforms, they should already have. It shouldn't be a big issue. But let's just have a conversation to make sure we're not missing anything. I think having that committee meeting, you can have it this month, sit down with the athletic director and headmaster, and the superintendent, I'm not sure if it's Mr. Lang or, you know, the superintendent directly, who's part of that subcommittee, get what you want specifically, so we're not running around over and over and over again. Folks have done a lot. We're not, we don't have a lot of resources at the high school. We don't have positions we need. We just had a good discussion about that two minutes ago, that we all want. And this individual is running at minimum capacity. Should have all the information, but let's get what we want before we, you know, get it and say, oh, I didn't want that. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Conway, the motion?
Well, I, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with my colleague, Mr. Leary, on this, because I think that we have, we have seen too often at subcommittee meetings, when a report is due, we had one last, a few months ago, and it was a very inclusive report, and yet there were certain members that were not happy with the report at all. And I think what I would like to see with this, instead of athletic director and the headmaster going off and spending countless hours putting a report together, and it's not exactly what, it's not exactly what we're looking for, I think it's more appropriate to bring them forward, take a look at it. And yes, we will make that meeting as soon as possible. I'm sure that tomorrow morning, Madam Superintendent can start polling the, the committee to find out when people are available to meet. So I think that by doing that, we bring these people forward, that we're not wasting their time, and we are zeroing in exactly the information that we need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Any other discussion on the motion as presented?
Well, I guess, it's, it's, yeah, it is a, it is a very detailed motion, without a doubt. And I think, and being someone who writes long motions, I'm, I'm impressed with it. And I'm going to make a substitute motion that we refer this to the Athletic Subcommittee, because I've been through a lot of these meetings, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful, because the information is solid information. We should have this information. I just want to make sure we get what we want, and not spin our wheels for three or four months, not happy with what we have. Let's specifically talk to the folks doing the reports. Maybe they can provide even better information. So I make it in form of referring motion number two to the Athletic Subcommittee for additional discussion.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Conway. On the substitute motion, Ms. Doherty?
It matters not to me if you want to meet first and then discuss the details. The fact is, we are entitled to this information. We cannot do our job effectively unless we have all the details. As my colleague to the left has mentioned, this is information we should be collecting anyway. If the, in, you know, respect of the chair of the Athletic Subcommittee, we do not vote on this right now. Discussing it now or next week, you know, voting and then discussing, or discussing and then voting, whatever, I'll go with that. But the point is, no work would be done on this, no extensive work, without a conversation. I'm okay with that. So I think ultimately, we are at the same place. So I will defer to this concern, as long as we know we're going to have this meeting, so that it's very clear the, the level of information we're looking for going forward, and that that happens within the next two weeks. And then we can take the formal vote, or maybe we won't even need to. But I'm okay with that.
On the substitute motion to refer, Ms. Doherty's second motion to the Athletic Subcommittee, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Post the vote. Mr. Conway, you'll call a meeting. you'll call a meeting. You'll call a meeting of the athletic Subcommittee?
As I said, I'm sure that, I just mentioned it, that Superintendent Schools will be doing the polling tomorrow morning, Mr. Mayor, and we will get this on the fast track.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next motion by Ms. Doherty, request the superintendent to provide the committee by October 15th with the job descriptions of the athletic director, equipment manager, and each individual sport team coach, a copy of the current instrument used to evaluate coaches, the timeframe and frame and process for conducting coach evaluations, as well as any formal documentation referring to Lowell High School's athletic policy. Second by Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think this, again, it's very specific, but it's information that should be readily available. We obviously have job descriptions for these positions. In terms of the formal athletics policy, there might be something written that I didn't see. I saw just a few paragraphs in the handbook, but I was at the Friends of Lowell High meeting on Monday night, where I heard a wonderful presentation that talks about our athletic education philosophy. So, it might exist in writing somewhere. What I want to do is really get a handle on what these job descriptions are, what, you know, and also this idea of how are we evaluating coaches. This is, again, speaks to the service of athletics and the work we're doing. And as I said, a lot of this stuff is, I think, readily available. Thank you.
Ms. Laraba?
With the permission of the maker of the motion, I would like to amend it to include, by that October 15th deadline, the current coaching roster of all fall sports, their salaries and the funding source for those salaries. And by funding source, I mean specifically, if we're talking about the swimming team, the girls' swimming team, you have a head coach, how is she funded? We have a diving coach that is being funded by donations, and if they're volunteer coaching, if they have given their time to volunteer as an assistant coach, it should state that as well, if that's okay with the maker of the motion.
You're comfortable with that? Okay. Did you get that information? Okay. Any further discussion on the motion now as amended? All those in favor signify by saying aye opposed to vote. Last motion by Ms. Laraba, requesting a more detailed breakdown of an anticipated shortfall of funds and increased costs for fiscal year 2012. Second by Ms. Doherty. Ms. Laraba?
Thank you, Your Honor. When we were given the overview of our situation for next year, I certainly understood that it was set up by categories. I guess, to use the expression of the night, I'd like to kind of drill down to where we arrived at some of those numbers, so that I can have a better idea of what we're looking at as we go forward, to see what kind of changes there might be. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye opposed to vote. Subcommittee report, Special Education and Student Support Services Subcommittee Report, and approval of the minutes of September 7th. Ms. Doherty, Chair, personally.
I think, Your Honor, I'll try to make this short and sweet. The Student Support Services Subcommittee did meet on Tuesday, September 7th. Present were myself and Subcommittee Members John Leahy and Connie Martin. Also in attendance were Superintendent Scott, Assistant Superintendent Anne Murphy, District Support Specialist Carol Ruseo, EC District Support Specialist Patricia Murphy-Ponchad, EC District Support Specialist Terry O'Neill, Bartlett School Teacher Kelly King, and Maury School Teacher Lynn McKelvey. We had three basic issues that we talked about. One was the preschool assessment and progress reports. The early childhood department came forward with some recommendations. They've been looking at how they're currently assessing preschool students, and they wanted to change, actually, work more closely with the Department of Early Education and Care, creative curriculum. It's an online way that they evaluate preschool students. So, they came up with, they did quite a bit of work and narrowed down to their 20 priority standards. And so, basically, they're looking at a new computer, a new report card system for their preschool children that would be more, what is the word, compatible for parents to understand and see what are the standards, how their children are doing on the standards, would include information about how they could improve, help students at home with meeting standards. So, the new report card schedule for the preschool students will replace, they're currently involved in the K-12 model. Instead of having two report cards and two progress reports, they would have three assessments that would coincide with our report card schedule. And it would be a different, these 20 power standards, so it would be a different assessment tool. After some discussion, we felt the initiative that the early education department had taken was, you know, to be commended, and we, the Subcommittee, a motion by Mr. Leahy, second by Ms. Martin, voted to recommend approval of the new pre-K assessment proposal. Three to one, and we'll bring that before the entire committee for approval. If we could just move on that one, the other one's a report of progress, and-
Okay. Okay. Motion to, motion to approve the recommendation of the Subcommittee regarding the pre-K assessment proposal, motion by Ms. Martin, second by Ms. Laraba. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Yes.
Ms. Laraba?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Melanasso?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. The next item was the dropout prevention and recovery report. We spent quite a bit of time talking about how the state actually measures dropouts, and it's a, it's a much more complicated picture than at least I had at least originally understood. For instance, we're supposed to track down students. I mean, if you move out of Lowell and, or you go to a private school, we need to find out why you didn't show up for school. And that can be a very complicated and time-consuming process. So, we discussed with, you know, what the report had to tell us at this point. It's still difficult to be able to link specific preventions and how effective they are in impacting the dropout rate, but there is further information that will be coming, as well as, Ms. Martin made a recommendation to develop a form. So, when somebody leaves the Lowell school system, let's say they go to a private school, the private school requests transcripts. At that point, we could have a form that would say, you know, where are you going, and that would help us with keeping track of these students that don't show up, that then become potentially seen as a dropout, when they're actually just going to a different school. So, that form and new procedures will be developed. We will be hearing more about that when we get the report of progress, based on the additional data that will be coming at a follow-up meeting. So, that was a motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leahy, to accept the report as a report of progress, and a follow-up meeting will be scheduled when we get the additional information. The la, the next one was a discussion regarding strategies to prevent child exploitation. Assistant Superintendent Murphy and District Support Specialist Kara Russo provided an overview of the Middlesex teen exploitation collaborative. It's a group of community representatives formed two years ago to address growing concerns over the sexual exploitation of children. What this is going to mean here in Lowell is, they presented a proposal to provide training to students, parents and staff to enhance our ability to identify and respond effectively to the needs of sexually exploited youth. So, the proposal includes staff from Lowell General Hospital, Alternative House, and the Asian Task Force Against Domestic Violence will serve as trainers for presentations that will be held to our social workers, psychologists, teachers, and support staff. There'll be an evening presentation to parents. Parent consent will be required for students to participate in presentations, and the Starcloser School has been selected. Their Grade Six will serve as the pilot site for presentation of two curriculum units. The ultimate goal with this is to take these two units and embed them into the already existing health curriculum that, as Deputy Assistant Jean Franco knows, we spent a great deal of time last year, the task force of our own staff, developing this health curriculum. So, this would be seen as an add-on to that curriculum. So, there's a motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leahy, to accept the report and move forward with the pilot program at the Starcloser School. And that's it.
Any questions on the-
If there's any comments from my colleagues.
Subcommittee report. Intend a motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leahy, all those in favor signify by saying aye opposed to vote.
I think we do have to include the part that we're going to move forward, the pilot program, that that should be in the motion, right? Because we are given permission to do this pilot program at the Starcloser.
That's on the, that's on the second motion.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
To move forward with the pilot program in the Starcloser School. Okay. Do we need a roll call on that?
I would say it on the-
Okay. Based upon adding that language to the, to the motion, I would request a roll call.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Laraba? Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Melanasso?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Thank you. Next item, reports of the superintendent. The first item is Race to the Top RFP process. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Lowell Public Schools' involvement in the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's Race to the Top Initiative is bold and extensive. And I'm just going to go over briefly the timeline as it exists today, and it's already changed somewhat from the original date. But by September the 20th, the full RFP shall, will come out, and we will be able to apply. Webinars will take place through the months of September and October. October 22nd, the district RFP response is due to the department, and by November 22nd, all RFP responses are due in Washington. Late November, early December, funding becomes available to the districts, and we'll be able to draw down on our Race to the Top money. Spring 2011, assistance to the districts, a plan for the implementation in years two, three, and four begin. There are a few important points about the program that I'd like to highlight. Race to the Top funds may be used only for activities or projects that support initiatives specifically identified in the state's Race to the Top Plan. These are not general-use dollars. We will need to respond to an RFP to access the allocated dollars. The requirements for the RFP will be tied to the commitments we made when we signed the MOU and the state goals and performance measures. Some projects, such as revamping the teacher and principal evaluation tools, will be, we will be required to participate in. The Department of Education, Elementary and Secondary Education, is not expecting districts to undertake collective bargaining now to address the teacher and principal evaluation requirements of Race to the Top. The department has convened a statewide task force that will be examining in detail the challenges and opportunities in performance evaluation. The work of this committee will be proposed to the Board of Education in February, creating new regulations for everyone in the state for teacher and principal evaluations. Those regulations will serve as a starting point for all local negotiations across the Commonwealth. For the October 22nd deadline, we will be asked to complete a detailed plan and budget for any activities we wish to undertake in year one. As well, we will need to provide a preliminary non-binding indication of which projects we will be joining in years two through four, because one is primarily a planning year. No more than 5% to 15% of the total funding is to be spent in year one. The department anticipates that we will continue the partnership of Superintendent, Union President, School Committee Chair, as we plan for this implement, for its implementation. The department will provide guidance for how to make the most of this partnership in the planning phase. The department encourages us to collaborate with other districts as well to meet our MOU commitments. For instance, we may wish to partner with neighboring districts to create a joint teacher preparation program, or early college high school. In the rest of the package, I will briefly go over the five projects that we may be signing up for. And again, we will know more what we can sign up for as we go along. As I just finished mentioning, in years two through four, the projects that we are interested in, we are able to give the nod and say we are, but it's not binding. And of course, I think a lot will depend upon how we are allowed to tap the Race to the Top money, and how many matching dollars we will have to come up with. But Project 1A is implement the statewide educator evaluation framework. Participating in the statewide educator evaluation framework is an opportunity for Lowell Public Schools to address longstanding concerns about the evaluation process for teachers and administrators that date back to the motion by school committee members John Leahy and Connie Martin on 08/20/2003. More recently, school committee member Jackie Doherty made a motion on 09/16/2009 requesting an update on the new instrument for evaluating teachers. At this time, we still do not have a completed teacher evaluation tool or an updated evaluation tool for administrators. Our participation in this statewide initiative, which is mandated by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, will ensure that we are able to reach our collective goal of having a robust professional evaluation system that will improve and support the performance of our staff. Project 2A, the alignment of curriculum to the common core state standards. Participating in aligning our curriculum to the common core state standards is imperative to our ongoing success. This work needs to be done in a timely fashion, so that Lowell Public Schools is ready for the new statewide assessment tools that will ultimately replace the current MCAS. Project 2B, strengthening climate conditions and school culture. Participating in Project 2B is important, because school climate and culture can either support our goals or impede them. In the spring of 2008, Lowell Public Schools participated in mass health survey, which was a powerful way for the district to identify the areas which needed to be addressed in order to improve the climate and culture in our schools. A great deal of work has been done to address the concerns raised in this survey. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education intends to run this survey again in the spring of 2011, and again in the spring of 2013. This will be a helpful way for us to measure our ongoing efforts to improve the climate and culture throughout the district. Project 3A, create near-real-time access to data in the education data warehouse by implementing the school's interoperability framework. Participating in Project 3A is the natural next step for the district to take in terms of expanding the tools, staff, tools staff can use to analyze their students' data. We began to work with the education data warehouse last year during our data summits, and we will be doing so again this year. The department came and provided us with a customized in-service training to our staff on how they could use this tool when analyzing our student data. This is a significant amount of work, sorry, there is a significant amount of work to be done in this area before our educators are fully equipped with the data analysis skills necessary, necessary to ensure every student reaches proficiency. Project 4A is development and implement a plan to increase the percentage of high school graduates completing Mass Core. Participating in Project 4A will provide our students with additional opportunities that will ensure high school graduates are, quote, "college-ready." The Massachusetts High School Program of Studies, referred to as Mass Core, is intended to help our state's high school graduates arrive at college or workplace well-prepared and reduce the number of students taking remedial courses in college. Mass Core recommends a comprehensive set of subject area courses and units, as well as other learning opportunities to complete before graduating from high school. The recommended program of studies, four years of English, four years of math, three years of lab-based science, three years of history, two years of the same foreign language, one year of arts program, five additional, quote, "core" courses, such as business, education, health, or technology. Mass Core also includes additional learning opportunities, including AP classes, dual enrollment, a senior project, online courses for high school or college credit, and service or work-based learning. This is earlier this evening, when I mentioned that we met with the department yesterday around our STEM pathway, and supporting science, technology, engineering, and math. One of the projects under this Mass Core is just simply that, and we were hoping to tap significant dollars to support those initiatives at the high school level. So, that's to be, yet to be determined, to the extent that we can afford to participate. Project 5A, implement one or more components of the statewide teaching and learning system. This project will give Lowell Public Schools the opportunity to pilot standards-based curriculum materials, and give us access to online bank of items or formative and interim assessments. This is a four-year project statewide, and this is just the beginning of the journey. Thank you, Your Honor.
Anybody have any questions on the report? Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Laraba, to accept the report as a report of progress, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
All right. Just a quick question, Your Honor. You, I just missed, earlier, you're meeting with the state on what date specifically to go over this? Again, is it the 20th, you said?
Well, we're meeting with the Deputy Commissioner on Friday.
Okay.
And we will be asking specific questions that weren't answered yesterday, but the RFP doesn't come out to the 20th.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item, parent-teacher meetings in the Lowell Public Schools' family outreach plan.
Thank you, Your Honor. The school committee is last round- The school committee's last round of negotiations with the UTL was successful in getting additional parent-teacher time into the contract. We have coordinated the effort across the system so that parents are able to attend all levels of high, the high school, the middle school, and elementary without being, there being conflicting dates, as well as there's a coordination of the early release days. We do have attached to this particular report our plan for outreach to our schools' communities, and listed here are all the ways that our staff will be reaching out to our communities. We put school committee member Doherty's motion at the bottom of this, as we're thinking that this would meet the requirements of that particular motion, and we thank her for the suggestions of putting together a formalized outreach plan so that the committee knows. We surveyed all of our schools. We stated what the expectation was. We want to know what they were doing. And then, we basically, after we had base 20 different ways to bring in the community that people were doing, we mandated the district ones that you see, and we've asked all schools to participate. And then, we've also given suggestions around additional things that schools could do. So we will be keeping an eye on this and our outreach. We do have volunteers and parent volunteers in our schools, as well as family liaisons. There's a few left in our schools who will be working with us at a district level and the principals to ensure that this gets carried out.
Ms. Doherty?
Aye. Thank you, Your Honor. Through you to the superintendent, I just would have a comment and a question. First of all, I want to, as a comment, thank you. This seems like a good plan. I'd like to kind of track the turnout for each school, like, for one thing, see how effective is the afternoon meeting? That was something we were able to negotiate, and we thought, you know, give parents a choice, you know, an evening and then an afternoon. And in addition to that, I would hope with the initial communication, we let parents know there is going to be another meeting, that's an afternoon meeting in February, and, but this seems like a very good start. I appreciate all the coordinate, coordination efforts that went into that. My question has to do with, one of the things I had hoped to see was this sense of, this is the time that parents go into the school. So I was a little confused that in November, we're doing the high school and the middle schools, but we're not doing, we're doing the elementary schools almost a month earlier in October, and I was wondering if there was a reason that we did the, a month apart between elementary and middle? That's my question.
Madam Superintendent?
Right. It coordinated with the report card times and the progress reports that were already established. So, and we will be sending this out, this information in this report, not only individual schools have sent it out, but we will be sending it out in the superintendent's corner as well for our school community, so that people get a sense of, this is the day, this is the time.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Motion to accept the family outreach plan is presented by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Leahy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote to vote. Next item, trauma, poverty, and homeless workshop series.
Yes, thank you. I want to bring to our community's attention that we do have a trauma, poverty, and homeless series, and their causes and effects on our students' families and ed, and on education. The series is funded through a McKinney-Vento grant that we have received, and we will, we will offer 50 to 60 staff members the opportunity to increase their understanding of how trauma, poverty, and homelessness affects student learning. And the dates will be in, on, sorry, on Tuesday, October the 5th, 12th, and 26th, November 2nd and 9th, from 3:35 to 5:45 at the Stock Closeup.
Question, Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much. Just a quick question. Obviously, a huge issue in our district, and I, I think it's great that this, McKinney-Vento is giving us this opportunity. Have there been any discussions about including some of our, our partners in homelessness prevention in the community? Whether, maybe not at the specific workshop, but it seems like the kind of thing that, whether it was our shelters or our scattered sites, or, I mean, I know that there are a number of community-based agencies working on the manager's 10-year plan to end homelessness. I would think there could be a real, a real interest in having Dr. Chee present. So where this is already an established, perhaps, presentation, it might be an opportunity to bring in some of our nonprofit partners and give them access to this kind of very high-level quality information.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion to approve the report as a report of progress by Mr. Conway, second by Ms. Larva. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Vote. Next item, queen bees and wannabes curbing bullying and aggressive behavior citywide forum on October 27th. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Your Honor. We would like to thank Saints Medical Center for working with us, partnering with us to bring in Rosalind Wiseman on Wednesday, October the 27th. It will be held at the Lowell Auditorium. We, this is a partnership with the Office of the Middlesex District Attorney's Office, as well as the Lowell Police Department, but the Saints Medical Center really is the one funding this event, bringing attention to a very important topic of curbing bullying and aggressive behavior in, in all of our surrounding towns, and we are hoping that there will be a good turnout of families to this event to address a very significant and ongoing issue that we continue to address.
Thank you. Anybody have any comments, questions? Motion by Mr. Leahy, second by Ms. Larva, to accept the report as a report of progress. Signify by saying aye. Vote to vote. Next item, Title II B Mathematics and Science Partnerships.
Thank you, Your Honor. I am pleased to announce that the Lowell Public Schools, in partnership with Edutron Corporation and Worcester Public Schools, has been awarded the Title II B Massachusetts Mathematics/Science Partnership Grant in the amount of $200,000 for this year. The proposal entitled, "Intensive Immersion Institutes for Grades 5 through 12 Teachers of Mathematics," will provide professional development in mathematics, content, and pedagogy to all interested teachers. The partnership will receive a grant for services beginning on September the 1st, 2010, and ending on August 31st, 2011. This grant will be awarded for a period of three years, based on appropriation of funds and, and yearly progress. The Lowell Public Schools have been fortunate to receive this funding in the past, and many hours of professional development for teachers of mathematics has taken place. The courses offered in the past provided a stepping stone in, in developing a professional learning community of mathematics, as well as deepening teachers and administrators' contact knowledge of mathematics in order to improve student achievement. At the present time, the first round of professional development using these funds is planned to start next week on September 15th of 2010. Twenty-five teachers from across the district will be coming together in exciting form of job-related, ongoing professional development that is focused on student learning and building a professional learning community. The Lowell mathematics learning community uses student work as a means of connecting professional development to the classroom by stimulating authentic discussions, sorry, stimulating authentic discussion about how students learn mathematics, with the goal of improving students' understanding and achievement in mathematics. We wish to thank Claire Abrams, our K-12 Coordinator of Mathematics, for collaboration with Eduron Corporation in securing this particular grant. And also, I think it's important to acknowledge Ms. Abrams and her team's efforts, and really, the math scores that we saw tonight across the system are truly impressive and are indicative of many, many years of work. Thank you.
Any questions? Motion to approve the report as a report of progress by Ms. Leahy, second by Ms. Doherty. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Vote to vote. Quarterly report on motions. We have, we have some information in our packets. Does anybody have any questions? Ms. Doherty?
Yes, Your Honor. In terms of the quarterly motions, I do have a couple of questions or concerns, but there was a, a new sheet, was there two new sheets on quarterly motions, or just the one? Okay. So it's just page eight that's new? Okay. So then, I'll, I'll go with my other points. Okay. If you look at, first of all, I would say, I would recommend that if we're all in agreement and the yellow ones are completed, that they could be taking off, taken off the list. Does that seem appropriate? Then we can kind of whittle it down until it's more manageable. Okay. So if we look at motions number 43 and number 67, they both have to do with high school clubs and advisors. So I would just say that I know that the high school's been working on a report on that, that whenever you're ready, you know, just do, we can do a poll and set up a Lowell High Subcommittee meeting, and if we could include Ms. Larva's motion, which is number 43, as well as, you know, 67 is the one they're working on, the one, I think that would be efficient to have that whole club discussion. The sec, second item on quarterly reports I had a question about was number 72, which maybe that's, no, I'm sorry, it wasn't 72. 72 has been revised here. It's number 82. I apologize. Which was a motion I had last meeting in Sept, September 1st. It says that the motion was rejected, and that motion was actually approved. And I know we haven't, we haven't gone over the minutes from the September 1st meeting, but I did check that part of the minutes, and it does say that it was approved in the minutes as well. So it's not, I don't, I'm not sure how it kind of slipped under the radar, but, so motion number 82 should be in progress. I'm sorry?
So that, that should be in progress? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. That would be my request with that one, because that was approved. And then, in terms of any of the other motions by me that you have completed, those are fine, and you can take them off the list. Thank you.
Mr.? Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After examining the, the motions, I'm a little disturbed here, rather upset, to be quite frank with you. I have 10 motions on here, on the quarterly report, and out of the 10 motions, three of them are completed, seven of them are not. When I take a look at the entire packet, I see that there's 82 motions, with 60 that are completed, or approximately 74 percent. I've got 30 percent completed, and that's a concern. You know, perhaps that's my fault for not following up. I just assumed that when we passed the, passed a motion, that it would be carried out. And as someone reminded me the other day, they said, whatever happened to that, that motion that you put on, perhaps through you, Mr. Mayor, I'll ask specifically the superintendent. I remember we talked about, and it was quite a few months ago, all the good things that happened in the school department, and somehow, people tend to concentrate on the negatives. And I thought it would be a good idea to put a motion on that would highlight those positives in the form of a brochure. And it was accepted by the committee. And matter of fact, I discussed it with Madam Superintendent, and she showed me a brochure, I believe from North Fork, which was, which was a, a nice brochure, and again, highlighting the things that are happening. I see what happens here today, tonight, when we took a look at all those positive scores. And the whole idea of that motion was to get those positive, positive points into this community and let people know that it's a good school system and that the staff is doing a good job. We could put it into banks and into different businesses. And in our schools, when parents came in, they could pick up that brochure and take a look at it and see what's happening. And to celebrate the positive. I never heard anything about it, unless I missed it in my packet, and that was months and months ago. Perhaps it has.
Madam Superintendent? Ms. Doherty? Ms. Doherty, please.
If, Mr. Conway, you're referring to the request for, it was a motion actually on 9/17/08 to have the superintendent's staff develop a promotional flyer for Lowell Public Schools. That's called The Guide to Lowell Public Schools. That recently was updated. It is in our Family Resource Center. The title of it is A Guide to Lowell Public Schools, and that was back and completed. This was presented at the meeting on March 4, 2009.
I don't believe I ever, did we ever see, get a copy of that in, in our packets?
It's on our, well, again, this was last March. It is on our website. I can provide you with the packet in your next packet.
No, I didn't see it. I personally did not see it. I know that we discussed it. I did not see it.
Right. Okay. I don't recall, at this point, if it was in a packet in March, but I know we did bring it forward, and again, it is on our website. I will present you with a copy.
Is it, is it in our schools? Is it in our businesses, that, like we, like we discussed?
It's not, it's not in the banks, no. And if the committee wishes to have somebody mail it out to, to the banks, if you, if that's what you'd like, we'll take that as a directive.
Well, I don't mean just specifically banks. I'm just talking about the business. I think, I think, again, out to the community itself, so that they, they would, they would know what was going on, because, once again, it's just to highlight the positives. And, and I saw the, the piece that you did in North Fork, and I said, this is great. Let's copy the same thing. Let's put that, let's put that out into the community so that everyone can see it. Again, it's just a, it's just a positive, and, and to be quite frank with you, that has slipped my mind, and then all of a sudden, when I'm looking at these motions, and I see that, you know, I have 10 motions on here, and only three of, three of them are completed, I, I, you know, I, I say to myself, this, I don't think this is appropriate, and, and I would certainly hope, I don't want to hop on this, to be quite frank with you, but I think that what we need to do is, is, I would certainly hope that these will be addressed in the very near future. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Any, Ms. Martin? Microphone?
Sorry. What number are we looking at?
It wasn't on this one.
It wasn't on this?
It was taken off on March 4th, 2009, as completed. And I was just telling Mr. Conway the update of where it was located in the Family Resource Center and on our website.
Well, I do have the floor. The, there is one remaining with my name attached to it, which references the, an event, the Athletics Informational Meetings, number 46, on page 5. I just wanted to say, it's my understanding that that did indeed happen last year at the high school. It was hosted. My hope certainly is that that's an ongoing thing, that will happen on an annual basis. If, if, so long as I can get the confirmation that that's the case from the high school administration, very comfortable with that coming off the list.
Okay.
And that was my only issue. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask about number 32, the school maintenance. I don't think we ever had a meeting, did we?
I'm sorry. What number?
Number 32. So if that could just be put back on.
Madam Superintendent?
Actually, that was held, I believe, last, right, last fall, after the, if, if you recall, the supervisor position was eliminated. We had that meeting, and that was the meeting, Mr. Leahy, where that position was hired, discussed, sorry, and as well, that was the meeting that we discussed having somebody do the inventory at the Rogers School, and at that time, the committee saw that they didn't have the funds or resources to address that at that time.
All right. I just, I thought we were on, we weren't going to meet with the city side to discuss that? No? No? All right. I'll, I'll put it back on. I mean, this has been a thing for years that I've been trying to get. And since you brought up the thing about the inventory, I don't, I don't see that on here either, because that's still in progress, right? So that should be on here, too, that, because it's still in process. We're still trying to inventory everything to see if we can get it out to sell, so.
Could I point a clarification from Mr. Lang on that, please?
Yes. Sorry. On the, the inventory, that came out of a subcommittee, and you actually are going to have your first batch of items to declare surplus at the next meeting. I don't believe it was on here because it came out of a subcommittee report. I keep a track of those separately.
All right. But it's still in progress. We're still, we haven't sold anything yet.
No, we haven't. The next meeting, you're actually going to have a list to declare surplus.
Oh, okay.
And then it will, the advertising process will happen, but that's in process right now.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Ms. Larva?
Just in looking at some of these open ones, could we set up a meeting for the Technology Subcommittee? I'm not really sure who's in the chair of that, and maybe address some of these, some of these motions? Is that you, John? Can we have a meeting? Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent?
Your Honor, I just wanted to address Mr. Conway's concern, because no way was Your Honor, I just wanted to address Mr. Conway's concern, because no way was at the intent of the cabinet to slight any of his motions, so I just wanted to give an update in the progress reports. On your motion, Mr. Conway, with regards to the athletic community advertising, to ask the superintendent and athletics director to investigate visibility of offering local businesses and other revenue sources the opportunity to advertise their services throughout the school's related activities, events, the revenues received through such activities to be used to help sustain our athletics program. That really is an ongoing issue. It's not that that hasn't been done or addressed. We continue to grapple with that issue. We've had many discussions on ways to generate revenues for our athletics programs.
Well, I haven't received any information in regards to that.
I'm just giving you the update that, you know, that has been on our radar, that we have been looking at how to engage the business community. We will provide a report. That's why it's not marked complete.
I understand what you're saying, but with all due respect, I... How would I know that? How would I have that information, unless someone told me? By some means. That's why I'm discussing these now. That's why I'm taking a look at, you know, to be quite frank with you, I'm not very happy with the fact that, you know, that seventy percent... Seventy percent of my motions, and I put them on, and believe me, they're not... You know, sometimes when I put these motions on, Madam Superintendent, it's not that easy to get four votes. And when we get the four votes, I'd like to have some of these... I'd like to have some of these taken care of.
Point taken. Any further discussion on the quarterly report and motions? Ms. Laraba?
Item number seventy-nine, I believe we referred that to the Personnel Subcommittee, about the superintendent's evaluation tool. If we can just make that notation.
Is that in the form of a motion, to refer?
I think we are... Didn't we already do that?
Okay. Then why are we talking about it?
Because it's not listed as being referred to the Personnel Subcommittee, which... It doesn't have to be.
Okay.
I think it was referred, but we haven't actually addressed it.
Right.
So I think that's why it's not completed, that we haven't...
No, I wasn't asking for it to be completed. I was just asking the notation. It's been referred, so the next question would be, when can we have our meeting to start on
Any else on the motions? Madam Superintendent?
I would like to thank the cabinet for all the work that they did put into responding to these motions. It is... Obviously, we see it as our job and responsibility to respond to the committee in a timely fashion, and the context of all of these motions being completed has been during a very difficult financial season for us, staffing season, and at the same time, clearly, we're continuing to move our schools forward. Thank you.
Mr. Arty?
Your Honor, I'd like to move that we accept the report, and also, if there's no objection, that all the completed motions get taken off, so we can...
Second by Ms. Martin.
I would second, but if I could make one distinction, I think it'd be great if we kept two lists.
Oh.
Just keep one, as things are completed, they move on to the completed list, just so it exists, and it's a great place for... As I find, like Mr. Conway does, I always find that a great reminder to kind of go through, you know, so just so they don't disappear into the minutes, which are far more difficult to track. But if we have a completed list, and then an ongoing list, I think that might be an effective way for us to kind of keep track of it.
That sounds fine.
That's fine. Okay. Right. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Prove the vote. Next item, list of eligible teachers. Madam Superintendent?
As presented, Your Honor, September tenth, two thousand and ten.
Move to accept the report by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Laraba. Question?
Speaking as the new person on the block, why do we get this report, and what are we doing with it, aside from looking at the names? Why do we get this report? Can somebody explain that for me?
Madam Superintendent?
Do we really need to get it?
I'm not aware of the history behind the practice. Ms. Martin?
Thank you. Just in terms of background, it was based on a court case, and I can't recall the name right now. Maybe someone else can help me out with it. But it was... I'm sorry?
The McCarty Bill.
McCarty Bill, which is a singularly Lowell institution, which is what mandates all of our hiring practices. It's how teachers have to get qualified to get on the list. It was an effort to reduce patronage. So, I believe it dates back about fifty years or so, but it does mandate that teachers have to go through a process to be on the list, and only teachers on the list can be hired in the Lowell Public School system. And it's the school committee's responsibility to maintain the integrity of that list, which is why we get the report on a regular basis.
So we actually have to officially accept, approve it at this meeting? So a motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Laraba? Another question, or...
I have another question. So, and again, forgive my faulty memory, are we getting this on a quarterly basis, or are we getting this on a monthly basis?
I believe it's almost every month.
Yeah.
Every meeting. I guess I'm just wondering, do we need to do that at every meeting? Could we do it quarterly? I'm just trying to save paper and... Because all we're doing is passing it through.
I think it would, I believe, require legislative action, so I'd recommend approaching our legislators, the delegation, because it was voted on at the State House, is my understanding. So, any changes, I think, would have to be done by a vote of the state legislature.
Okay. Thank you. So, are you comfortable seconding the motion, Ms. Laraba, to accept the report? I'm sorry, to, yes, officially accept the report? No? Okay. Thank you. All those in favor of accepting the report as presented as of September fifteenth, two thousand and ten, signify by saying aye. Prove the vote. Thank you. Personnel report?
As presented, September fifteenth through two thousand and ten, Your Honor.
Any questions on the personnel report, new hires? Hearing none. Motion to accept the report as presented by Mr. Arty, seconded by Mr. Conway. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Prove the vote. And the last item, under report of superintendent, we have home education. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Request for home education. The following parents seek permission to home educate their children. Kathy Cutter, four sixteen Vernum Avenue, and Jeremy Sherry, Cottell, twenty-seven Jackson Street. Under General Laws, Chapter seventy-six, Section one, home education is constitutionally permissible. Therefore, I recommend approval of this request. If granted, the number of families approved by Lowell School Committee to homeschool will total twenty-four, and the total number of children will be fifty-two.
Any questions, Ms. Laraba? A motion by Ms. Laraba to approve the report, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Ms. Arty?
Yes.
Ms. Laraba? Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Melanazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
On the new business, acceptance of gifts to Lowell High School. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Attached, please find, communication from Petmaster Rose Merrick indicating that Lowell General Hospital, once again this year, would like to donate senior football helmets to the incoming two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven Lowell High School freshman football program. If the members of the Lowell School Committee are in favor of this donation, I recommend the following action or vote be taken. Mayor, would you like me to read that, or...
Sure.
To accept the offered gift, senior football helmets from Lowell General Hospital for the purpose of donating them to the incoming two thousand and ten, eleven Lowell High School freshman football program. A vote, Your Honor?
Correct.
Make a motion to accept.
Make a motion to accept by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Arty. Before we call a roll, I just want to say for the record that I'm a trustee at Lowell General Hospital. I'm not benefiting from this, so I do plan to support, just for the record. Ms. Laraba?
I just want to ask a question, and I don't know if the superintendent would have an answer to that. Do we track these helmets to make sure that the kids drop out of the program, we're getting the helmets back, or how does this program work? You know, if we have extra helmets, are we then giving them to upperclassmen? Or are we just definitely saying to them, "We have fifty freshman kids. We need fifty helmets"? Because if I recall from other conversations, we've had kids drop out of the program in the past.
I'm sorry?
I think every year, you're getting the equipment back, so if a student drops out, all the equipment's definitely being tracked. And one of the reasons why you don't get your diploma handed to you at the end of the year, you have to go down under the cellar to get your diploma. It's really a farce. It's because if you owe money for anything or equipment, you don't get any diplomas. So that's definitely something they pull back in.
Any further discussion, questions? Roll call. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Martin.
I just... I mean, just a very quick thank you, and I would make a request to the superintendent that we do send an official letter of thanks to Lowell General Hospital. They're a remarkable community partner. Our illustrious mayor's affiliation aside.
Thank you.
But it's just extraordinary to have that kind of a support from a local hospital like that, supporting this effort, so our thanks should be sent along.
Thank you. Roll call.
Ms. Arty?
Yes.
Ms. Laraba?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Melanazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Thank you. Next item, FY twenty-eleven budget transfer, electricity and natural gas utility accounts. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Your Honor. During the FY eleven budget deliberations, we discussed and recommended that electricity and natural gas utility accounts for the school department-related expenses currently appropriated by Lowell School Committee within the FY two thousand and eleven local operating budget be transferred to the City of Lowell operating budget. This will allow for the funds to be allocated and monitored by the new energy manager responsible for the AMRESCO performance contract. This allows all of the City of Lowell utility accounts to be monitored and tracked, along with the various energy efficiencies that are being provided citywide by the performance contract. In future fiscal years, the City Council will appropriate funds for school department-related utility expenses as recommended by the city manager within the City of Lowell's operating budget. At this time, Lowell School Committee has appropriate the following budget for electricity and natural gas expenses within the Lowell Public Schools Utility under electricity, two point four... Two million, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars on the utilities, heating, natural gas, oil, two million, two hundred thousand, for a total of four million, six hundred and seventy-five hundred thousand dollars. I recommend that Lowell School Committee transfer the total utility budget of four million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, as specified above, to the City of Lowell's operating budget and the City of Lowell's appropriate monitor management the utility expenses related to Lowell Public Schools, beginning in two thousand and eleven and continuing. By this action, the Lowell School Committee will be reducing the two thousand and eleven local operating budget from one hundred and thirty-five million, four hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars to one hundred and thirty million, eight hundred thousand, and one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. This action has no effect on the City of Lowell net school spending requirement.
Any questions, comments? Motion to... Mr. Leahy?
I guess through you to the superintendent. Is there any type of a written agreement that goes with this, as far as... And I can see the benefit with all the work we're doing with the MRS...
AMRESCO?
Yeah, AMRESCO. But I'm just... There should be something, and what if costs go up? What if costs go down? I mean, right... Once we do this, we don't realize any savings, but if costs go up, we're not going to get charged with the extras. I mean, how do we monitor this, I guess? There should be some sort of a side agreement or something with this, I would think.
Madam Superintendent?
It's my understanding, and our last Assistant Superintendent, Lang, to expand, but when we transfer these utility lines and the responsibility of monitoring them to the city side, if in fact the costs go up, that that would be taken care of by the city side. If it goes down, that would also be taken into account. That might as well refer back to the city. I do have the understanding that if it goes over, that it, no doubt, will go to our net school spending. You know, it will be attributed to that. But do you have anything to add to that, Mr. Lang?
No, I was just going to say, I think this is actually a wise move for the school committee to, you know, work with the city, to solidify all the accounts we've done. This in the past, a few years back, we actually... We transferred the lease payment from the Bon Marché Building to the school department control, because it really affected us. Now, working with the city with the AMRESCO contract, they're budgeting for certain savings, and it's much easier for them managing the AMRESCO contract, to be able to monitor those accounts and savings. And then they will actually be budgeting the, you know, the shortages and seeing the savings in one year, or if there's an over expenditure one year, they would have to be budgeting and monitoring that with all of the other city accounts. Utility accounts are accounts both for gas and electricity. That it's the actual dollar amount that's spent, is what's reported to the DOE for net school spending, and whether it's spent out of a city account or out of a school account, it's a dollar-for-dollar expenditure. It's not an account, because there are some accounts that are based on just budgeted figures, but the utility accounts are actually based on actual expenditures and actual figures, so it doesn't matter, net school spending-wise, if the account is a city account or a school account. And I actually still, you know, monthly, I meet with the finance team, with all the city officials, and this is certainly something we'll talk about if it's going up or down and whatnot. And as they make adjustments to all of the city accounts, which are, because they have many more properties than we do, larger than our accounts, our accounts would be adjusted at the same time. It would be easier to have them all be managed and adjusted from one source.
So, I mean, they would, once we transfer these accounts, though, they would have the right to come in and shut all the lights off at eleven o'clock on the dot, parks, gyms, whatever, right?
No.
They're paying the bill. I mean, I just want to make sure that all our Ts across and Is are dotted, because if they're in charge of the bills now, they can set the rules. They can come in and... What's to keep them from coming in and saying, "I want..." You have one custodian in the building, he's got to shut all the hallway lights as he goes down the line. There's not going to be any type of rules or anything like that. I mean...
Right.
You know my feelings on the downtown lease.
Right. Even, I mean, to be quite honest with you, the energy efficiencies that the city's putting in, as far as even some of the lighting fixtures that'll be installed, a lot of them are going to be monitored. So if you're walking down a hall, and, you know, the monitor is on, the lights will be on. When you leave that wing of the building, the lights are going to be shut off, until you walk back into that wing of the building. These are all efficiencies we would want to work with the city on anyway. I don't ever see us getting in a situation where we want the lights on past ten o'clock, and they shut them off on us.
Okay.
You know...
Well, I just want to make sure that...
Right. I can communicate that to them, and just make sure that's their expectation.
Right.
I'm feeling pretty comfortable, though.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Motion to accept the recommendation of the administration that we transfer the utility budget of four million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the city side, thereby reducing the FY twenty-eleven operating budget to one hundred and thirty million, eight hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. Motion by Ms. Arty, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Ms. Arty?
Yes.
Ms. Laraba?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Melanazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Thank you. Next item, MSBA vote statement of interest. We have, let me see, nine, one, two, three, four, nine votes. Is it the wish of the committee to take them together? Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Conway, that we take item number three as one vote. All those in favor of taking them as one vote, signify by saying aye. Prove the vote. Chair would recognize Madam Superintendent or Assistant Superintendent Lang to just give us some information on the vote, and then we'll take all nine together.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Massachusetts School Building Authority has opened the process for the submission of statements of interest for the green repair program. Nine of our schools qualify and need funds from this particular source, and I'd just like Mr. Lang to expand on the needs of the nine schools.
Sure. The SBA has identified a... Some funding for this year, approximately three hundred million dollars, to be given out as more one-time project repairs. Typically, they fund new school building projects, like the Maury School, that has a twenty-year payback period. They actually have allocated funds specifically for roof repairs, boiler replacements, and window replacements. So these are a lot of projects that were identified within the AMRESCO performance contract, and we're invited. One of the requirements is both of the city council and the school committee authorize the superintendent to just submit a statement of interest, which may then result in the SBA getting back to us, asking us to file a formal application for an award to cover one of these expenditures. Lowell would qualify for approximately eighty percent reimbursement on one of these for approximately 80% reimbursement on one of these projects, which would be actually better than if we just did these projects under the AMRESCO performance contract. So, it's advantageous to the school committee and the city council to at least submit a statement of interest to be invited into the application process. If we can get any of these projects paid for with 80% funding from the SBA and only then have to finance the 20%, we may be able to get deeper into some of the projects that AMRESCO had identified for performance contract savings. So, going through the list of schools, these are primarily our older schools that are in need of the roofs and boilers and windows. Our newer schools within the last 10 to 15 years, they're still under good useful life, and they're not needed at this point in time to have those particular items addressed. The SBA actually has pretty strict guidelines for both the city council and the school committee votes. These are just worded by the actual SBA. You just insert your school names and addresses. And there were nine schools that we're recommending we at least submit the statement of interest for, and then see what we get back from response for SBA when we're invited into the actual application round.
Thank you, Ms. Lang. Mr. Doherty?
Motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion to approve recommendation for all nine schools, by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Leary. Any further questions, discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Larva?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Mayor Milonazo? Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yays, approved.
Thank you. Item number four, fund transfer, Rogers Middle School Student Activity Account. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Your Honor. We'd like permission to authorize the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations to transfer means of payment in the amount of $7,334.78 to the Greater Lowell Community Foundation Lowell High School Campaign for Educational Excellence Scholarship Fund from the Rogers Middle School K-8 Student Activity Account. The recommendation is being made by Mr. Lang that we do this transfer of funds as it is, these funds will be incorporated into the Lowell High School Scholarship Fund, funds designated, received for former students of the Rogers School, obviously, we have closed it, who will be attending post-high school college studies.
Any question, Ms. Doherty?
I was just going to say, motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Leary. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Larva?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Milonazo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yays, approved.
Item five, fund transfer, Green Alge Elementary School Student Activity Account. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, again, the Lowell Public Schools Business Office manages the individual school K-8 Student Activity Accounts to assist school principals to provide financial oversight for compliance purposes and to safeguard the proper receipt expenditure and reporting of K-8 Student Activity Account funds. At this time, a fund balance of $13,655.99 remains within the Green Alge Elementary School Scholarship Fund Student Activity Account. I recommend that the Lowell School Committee vote to authorize the transfer of the remaining fund balance of $13,655.99 associated with the Green Alge Elementary School Scholarship Fund Student Activity Account to the control and custody of the Greater Lowell Community Foundation. These funds will be incorporated into Lowell High School Campaign for Educational Excellence Scholarship Fund designated for, received by former students of the Green Alge Elementary School who will be attending post-high school college studies. I recommend the Lowell School Committee vote tonight on this amount being transferred.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Larva, seconded by Mr. Leahy to approve the transfer. Any discussion, questions? Roll call.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Larva?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Milonazo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yays, approved.
Item number six, fund transfer of Varnum Elementary School Student Activity Account. Madam Superintendent?
With the same rationale as just read in the two previous cases, we're making the recommendation that a fund balance of $1,664.64 which remained within the Varnum Elementary School Student Activity Account be transferred, again, to the Greater Lowell Community Foundation for Lowell High School Campaign for Educational Excellence Scholarship Fund from the Varnum Elementary School K-8 Student Activity Account as the Varnum School is closed.
Thank you. Motion to approve by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Roll call.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Larva?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Milonazo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yays, approved.
Thank you. Under convention and conference requests, there are three this evening. The first one is Kathleen McLaughlin, Bailey and Lincoln School Mathematics Resource Teacher, has been invited to attend the American Federation of Teachers National Conference from Wednesday, October 6th through Friday, October 8th in Washington, DC. The cost will be paid by the AFT through the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. There is no substitute required, and there will be no cost to the district.
Mr. Mayor, why can't we take all three of those?
Okay, we can. Motion by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Leary, that we take the three requests together. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed? I would just offer one amendment to item number three. Superintendent of Schools, Chris Scott, has been invited to participate in the American Federation of Teachers National Conference. It's on Thursday, October 7th, and Friday, October 8th. So, it's actually two days. So, if we could just make that note, or make that change. But again, we have Kathleen McLaughlin, Paul Georges going to the American Federation Conference, and then we have Superintendent Chris Augustus Scott going to the conference as well. So, motion to approve, Ms. Martin? Yes, yes.
If I could, I do believe in, again, I don't know if this is an email issue, where an invitation was posed to the members of the Lowell School Committee. I don't know if anyone, I know I've already responded that I wouldn't be able to attend, but I was hoping that some, one of us would be able to go.
Madam Superintendent?
That is the next item on the agenda under Communication. But we did get that email from Ms. Martin. Thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
Motion to approve the conferences?
Motion to approve the conferences by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Larva?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Milonazo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yays, approved.
Thank you. Ms. Larva?
I just wanted to thank the superintendent for taking on the cost of the air and ground travel herself, rather than asking the district to pay for it, which she could by rights do.
Do we know that? Thank you. No. Ms. Doherty?
Well, I understand that the next item is Communication regarding the same conference. I thought I'd ask and see if any of my other, if any colleagues were interested in going. I'd like to go. I haven't worked out the details yet in terms of whether I'd be able to. So, I wanted to know if anybody else is interested.
Let me get it on the floor. Under Communications, we do have a communication from Paul Georges, addressed to the school committee. The American Federation of Teachers will be hosting the National Conference in Washington, October 6th through the 8th. Conference is open to elected leaders. Therefore, Mr. Georges would like to invite a member of the Lowell School Committee to be on our team. And as Ms. Doherty noted, she would be interested in attending. Again, accept the communication, placed on file by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leahy. All those in favor of accepting the communication, place on file, signify by saying aye. Vote. Did you need an answer to your question this evening, or it's out there that...
I'm sorry, it was...
No, I mean, again, you wanted to know if anybody else was interested in going. You're interested in going.
I'm interested in going, but I haven't worked out the details that I'll be able to. So, is there anyone else who's interested in? There's no one. So, if I could be, if I can make it work for my scheduling and stuff, would, is that amenable to my colleagues, that I be the school committee representative? Would that...
Ms. Larva?
I just want to make a clarification. It's not due to lack of interest. It's terms of other commitments in the past. I just didn't want, I didn't want the AFT to think that we weren't interested in working with them.
Mr. Georges has his hand up. Is it all right if we recognize Mr. Georges?
I need to suspend the rules.
Well, it's actually his letter before us.
All right. This is, just to fill in some blanks on this thing, this is the National Conference on Collaborative School Reform Designed by the Labor, Designed for Labor Management Teams. So, obviously, we have the superintendent attending, and we're inviting any school committee person that might be interested in going. Kate McLaughlin will be going, and I'll be going. I'd just be concerned, Jackie, certainly we would love you to come. But if it does not work out, we would like someone else to come in instead, so we make up a four-member team. So, I know you have a procedure where you have to approve travel. And if it ends up that you can't go, I would just suggest that you find perhaps someone from Central Administration, or someone from one of the schools, or perhaps, you know, the headmaster at the high school, who's now new to the system, or someone in case Ms. Doherty can't make it. I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about your next meeting would be the actual night that you'd be expected to be in Washington. What's that? Oh, no, I don't want that to be the incentive. But this is a very valuable conference in that it will present groundbreaking research identifying the principles that support sustainable school reform, and offer models of successful collaboration among districts, unions, and political leaders, and showcase how collective bargaining can be used to create a tool to codify collaborative efforts. And, you know, this, there's going to be speakers from Rutgers University, Cornell University, the six AFT districts that are going to be highlighted that have been doing this for an extended period of time. So, I, my only concern is that I don't, procedurally, if Ms. Doherty can't go, if you could designate someone or allow the superintendent to designate someone, so we have a four-person team. That's all my own concern.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think it's clear we need to vote tonight, because the next meeting, as Mr. Georges said, is, will either, one of us will either be on route or it would be too late. So, I would put myself forward as a candidate, and then I would ask if there's...
I'll put my name as a substitute.
As a substitute, so that the approval tonight would be that either I go, Jackie Doherty, or John Lee would go as the representative of the school committee.
I think, unless I get correct, we may need to substitute, I'm sorry, suspend the rules to take this up at this time, even though we do have a communication. Move to suspend the rules by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Larva, to take up the issue of a school committee member going to the AFT conference. All those in favor of suspension, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we have a motion to have Ms. Doherty and/or Mr. Leahy attend the conference October 6th through the 8th. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Doherty?
Present.
Ms. Larva?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Can I vote?
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Milonazo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Six yays, one present, approved.
Under Communications, the second item, Lowell Telecommunications, Channel 10, broadcast of school committee meetings, live on the first and third Wednesday of the month, Thursday at 6:00 PM, Saturday, Sundays at 2:00 PM, Tuesdays at 10:00 AM. Any professional personnel issues to come before us? Civil service issues, hearing none. Motion to adjourn by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, the vote. Thank you all.